Be redacted from the positions or similar positions will be, can be created by resolution. Cherry Yeager, we spelled her name wrong and we are correcting that to Y-A-G-E-R. Under new business, item B, City Manager Association Conference should read City Management Association Conference. And under resolution 2015-5, stands of number five, it reads lot S-17 and lot S-18 instead of, oh, it should read, I'm sorry, it should have the S's in there. Lot 17 has the S, but lot 18 does not have the S and correctly should be with the S. And I also just give a heads up, we will be going into executive session for personnel reasons tonight only.
I've requested legal on that.
And legal during executive session.
Yes. And I have a question about the agenda. You've got Cynthia Messenger and Don Johnson. It's not written to approve.
We will be voting on both of those?
Okay. Well, it just says effective that day, it has to be voted on each one.
I have a note that we will vote on those. I am mentioning it now that we will vote on personnel A and B. All right, with those changes to the agenda, unless anybody else has any?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The minutes from January 5th, regular meeting.
Motion to approve.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Bills in between, $129,566 and 25 cents.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor? Discussion?
Yes. We are approving, it's already been done, $41,000 this, these are to the Boys' Club, Life Hope Vision, etc. She talked to Rod today, I've got one, he suggested we might want to look at our resolution for what can be listed on deals in between and that these would maybe be better in whatever business call.
And the accounts payable?
Instead of being the bills in between. That way we give the bill and we vote on it. Instead, these checks have already been written.
Because they were approved in budget?
It doesn't matter, I have a letter in my bag, I'll pass it around to you back.
I'm not going to read it right now.
Okay.
You guys can decide whether you want to approve again what you approved in the 2015 budget.
No, I just, I do, it's in the letter from, I'll let you know whenever you want it. Anyway, I just wanted in the minutes that I've requested that we look at this and see that whatever's in the bills in between is truly bills in between.
Okay. Any other discussion?
You have a motion?
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carried. Current claims for 2015, $233,614 and 94 cents.
Motion to approve.
Next time. All right. Any discussion?
Yes, I've got three questions.
Okay.
From the safety meeting people, meat, the Scotland guy, I don't think the taxpayers need to buy water and cookies for their meat, they can get them themselves if they want it. A bunch, they went to Menards and bought everything they could buy in Hot Springs, a total of $136.29, they have to shop local.
I know they make the apple too.
Well, they sure did because it was a grease gun and stuff like that, they can buy everything downtown. Airport did the same. They went to two different places in Rapid when they could have bought the same stuff here and down, maybe support our local businesses.
Absolutely agree.
One more thing. There's three of us councilmen that observed somebody putting cameras up in front of city hall, I didn't see a bill for those, but who gave that?
That was in the 2015 budget request for the government building under professional services.
And it said in the budget, my budget, that we wrote?
I've double-checked that with Misty, it's there. And that's what I requested at budget time.
And we talked about this, what you're saying during budget.
Was that a question?
Yeah.
Then yes.
I never.
You just said that.
Was part of a discussion about buying security cameras anywhere.
Were you at all of the?
Yes, I was.
Budget meetings?
Yes, I was.
So yes, you were part of that discussion?
It's the only thing I asked for, so, besides the roof.
What's this good, well, I wrote down, the only thing that I have that we had.
That isn't even a bill on here right now, so let's not spend too much time on it.
Well, we're not done putting cameras up in my understanding.
The bill is not on here, if you want to talk about that later, we can. We're now talking about the bills, the current claims.
Okay, I got one, page three, Harvey's lock and security. Lock replacement on door and wastewater plant. Change that numerous times, how come we're changing it again? No?
Yeah, I do not know.
Tracy said that the back door at the plant was broken and they had to replace the lock on it. I don't know how it got broken.
Thank you, Debbie.
Well, I know it's been a policy every time an employee's been terminated and we change the lock, I don't understand that thinking. You have a place.
That's not why it happened.
Okay, this isn't the first time, that's why I'm bringing this up.
I think Debbie explained what happened.
And I'm telling you, in the past, every time an employee's been terminated, we've changed the lock because we've got the attitude that we.
Are you requesting that?
No.
Or you just made a statement?
I made a statement because this isn't the first time that we've replaced the lock. It just coincides with something that's just taken place. Page five, I guess, your legal fees for $900 with Carol Boo's attorney. To my knowledge, I guess, we haven't been doing any legal services with Carol.
Carol Lance made several calls to her and if you want to itemize, Bill, we can get one. I've also consulted with her on a few items as well. As you know, we've had some issues that have required a physical consultation.
Well, have we ever thought about doing a retainer instead of like an hourly billing or?
I believe that was requested for her to attend city council meetings as she did for the surprise. But that was just for city council meetings. Any other questions, discussion?
I've got one question.
Sure.
Northern Plains LLC, page three, the $88,000, is that the balance on what's left of the original contract? With what was the original bid? That's not part of the change order, it will be approved later.
I believe that he wrote on here that this is retainage less the $2,000 late fee for the 2014 water main project.
So that's, that would be the final bill?
That's his final bill.
And Tracy gave five bucks.
This and the change order over above this.
This is the final, $88,000.
Thank you, Debbie.
I have a question. Page two, what is public agency training, travel and counseling, training money, and such?
I think that's the one, Mike Rose. What, what you say is?
Page two. His training is not until March, so.
It's in here though. $525.
Well, I mean, probably has a.
Yeah, that's Mike Rose's training.
That's a leadership training class.
What is, page two, the second page, BH, this, I probably should know, this flat rate, this.
That's our monthly fee for them to just be on hand in case we need work on some of our computers.
On your computer, okay. All right. Okay, so we're working on the current claims part of your package, it's just for January 2015. The other part of it is accounts payable for 2014. So what, I need to approve those both separately? So current claims, $233,614.94, any more discussion on that part of your package? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, now the accounts payable is the other payments package and that is for the last bills for 2014. And that's.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion on that one or did you combine the two? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, communications from the public, we have a room on the agenda, so you get to go first.
Good evening, thank you for allowing me to speak. I am, my name is Aibun Analona and I'm the current chairperson of Friends of Evans Plunge. On December 15th, Mr. Neil Miller made presentation to the city council and in that presentation, he gave the city council a document which was a park plan for Evans Plunge. In his verbal remarks, he indicated that he was submitting this plan on behalf of Friends of Evans Plunge. Please be advised that Mr. Miller's park plan was not a plan endorsed by Friends of Evans Plunge, nor was Mr. Miller authorized to make a presentation of this plan by the chairperson of the Friends of Evans Plunge or the membership at any of our meetings. And I'm submitting this letter so that the record can be updated. In your package, you have this letter which I just read, you have the minutes from the October 8th, as well as the December 10th meeting, which states the instructions given to Mr. Miller, and you also have a copy of the letter that I wrote to Mr. Miller indicating that his actions were out of order. I've been the chairperson of Friends of Evans Plunge since June 4th of 2014 and I just want to state that future presentations will be made by the chairperson of Friends of Evans Plunge, you will receive notification prior to any presentation and you will receive documents so that we don't have a problem again so presenting what we have.
Okay, does anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks for the clarification, thank you. Any other communications from the public? Ms. Ryan?
I just have a quick thing. On behalf of Dale with Darren Troy, we had an accident behind Pono on the back street by, on Garden Street and the roads were really extremely slick, we couldn't keep our trucks in the road. City crew came out there and cleaned up the road, standing before us and stayed there till we were done and made sure we got out of it. And we really appreciate that, just for watching, they did a great job, arrived really quick, I don't know if Brian were busy on something else, but he comes straight down to help us out quick, we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. We're speaking with Billy in the morning and I'll share that with him as well. Wally?
Yeah, I want to ask you, is there anything with Don, what I talked before about annexed the kills material, get some money to the town or nine one things, what's happening with propane, if nothing go down, try to get the natural gas over here.
I'm going to put that on your.
Can you put something on it?
So that says, no, I haven't, I apologize, there has just been so much fun going on in the city, I haven't gotten to the good stuff yet.
So we can go on the mound and see if anything's going on, we can help with something like that and then.
There's actually two annexations that I'll, I'll share with.
And I was also wondering what's happened with the McDonald's? Because the.
If we can't have it our way.
We'd be uninvited.
You know, no one has approached me about that and no, I have not contacted McDonald's to see if they're, you know, interested in coming back.
They do.
If anybody in the audience has more information on that, but nobody has come to me about it.
Wally, are you having a big mouth attack?
No.
So, I need to talk to about a couple of these annexation comments. No one's been here a month, so it's time to put in the work, huh?
I thought he did that the day before he came to work.
He, I know, he did do work before he came to work, but not that one, thanks. Any other communications from the public?
I got something. Someone's spreading some.
Somebody else? Somebody's, go ahead. Can you wait, Chris, and let Wes finish? Okay.
Someone's spreading some false truths out there. I have never had any conversation with Kim Moyer about city selling our equipment from Evans Plunge, someone by the name of Lisa is spreading this about and I just want to set the record straight, I have never, that was Mr. Lux that had that conversation with her, not I. So if anyone likes some information, they're welcome to call me and I will, I guess, tell them anything I know, but it was not I.
Okay, thanks for that clarification, appreciate it. Chris, you're on. Sorry about your packers.
Don't be.
Go bowl.
I just.
Chris, you want to come up to the phone or speak up please?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
I just want to know, like, when the city first bought the plunge or why, as a public, why weren't we giving any financials to, to, to the plunge? Like, I got a copy from Misty right here that says by the year 2032, we're going to owe over $2 million for the, for the Evans Plunge and I want to know why the city didn't do their homework when they first, first bought the plunge. It just, we'll look at it and you go into the pool, there's so many maintenance problems there. And, and look at the gym up there, that gym is falling apart. We have an excellent gym in town, Health for Life. Why do we need to have two gyms in this town? We don't. This is, this is not even city, it's not Rapid City, it's not Chicago, Illinois, it's Hot Springs, South Dakota, we are a small town, we can't afford it. If the Evans Plunge want to tap into something, I just spent all day at the nursing home. Why don't we tap into the therapies and work with these elderly people that are stuck, that are in the nursing home or in the state home? We tap into water therapy and we use that. We tap into the water therapy so they can have joint mobilization, so they can move and, and exercise. These older people, they cannot walk up the steps of the, of the Evans Plunge and if they want to come to gym in town, we have an excellent one. I remember that, it's Health for Life Fitness. You can walk in, you don't have to walk up the steps. And there's like three fire states at Health for Life Fitness. And another point of mine is, there's a special lady here, she's a dear friend of mine, named Kim Moyer, she has supported this town so much, so much. And I hate, I hate what the city and what the Evans Plunge is doing to her, I hate it. Keeps me up at night. Shame on all you guys, the only two people in this council that care about Hot Springs is Craig and Wes Grimes, you're the only two that care about this city. They stand up for what we believe. The rest of you guys, I'm sorry, you guys need to leave. You guys need to get off the council now. That's what's wrong with this council, though you guys. You guys need to get out, you guys need, we need more people in the council like Wes Grimes and Craig Roney, because they care about this city. And, and Kim Moyer has did nothing, she did the mud run, she did the color fund run, just put on all these events for the city. And what, and none of the council members have ever gone for her events. Why? I just want to know why. Why are you guys out to attack her and to attack Health for Life Fitness? Because I take that personally when you guys are attacking my gym.
I don't, I'll make a comment with regard to that. When, when the city was put out to a vote that the city wanted to purchase the plunge, the voters decided that we were going to buy the plunge. When we bought plunge, it was the pool, the exercise room, and the gift shop, along with concessions that were already in there. That business was there a long time. In fact, I think it's about 100 years.
Well, I guess you have to. But they go to the state, go to Lance Russell and go to Kristi Noem, John Dune.
About what?
On my grounds, about unfair competition.
It's not unfair competition.
Government is doing, the city government is.
City government is not in competition.
Oh, yes, they are.
No, we are not.
In the food.
That's your opinion.
Over here.
That's your opinion. You can have that opinion, but you're wrong.
Okay, do we have anything, any other communications from public that address? Yes, the gentleman behind you was first.
Okay. Well, Chris, of course, you know, I love the plunge and I go all the time, need that steam room and stuff, but we were talking the other day.
Did you come? Have you gone?
Do you see the?
We do videotape these.
Please, please state your name.
Ray Walker, 2500 Minicotta, Building 19, I am a renter for the record.
Still a wrestler.
So, so the numbers were shown, we're probably going in a red, right? For the, for, from revenues of the plunge. A lot of us are wondering if there is a, what was it, $30,000 left or something for, after December, or?
I don't believe that to be correct.
Okay.
We are still, and as Misty stated, and Misty's sick this evening, but she, we had a discussion on it a couple days ago, you know, we are still not done reconciling the books on that.
Oh, okay.
So, the data that went out with the Friends of Evans Plunge report.
So the stuff Mary.
It's not based on being done with that.
The newsletter is probably no good.
Whose letter?
The news, the stuff was given to Mary Dulay, it's probably no good, is it a newsletter?
I don't believe it's be good, no.
Okay. So your information was no good in the newsletter?
I just took what Misty gave me.
Yeah, Misty will be putting a disclaimer until we have cleaned up the books on that, so she, she just tried to pacify with what she knew at that point, it is not done.
So you're saying that $58,000 was not taken out of sales tax revenues to meet the shortfall?
I didn't say anything like that.
Okay.
Why are you bringing it up?
He's probably looking at the last number.
Because I'm looking exactly what was given to us.
So, it's good to see that a lot of staff here tonight, lifeguards. So when you get to the point, you're going to pay them out of the revenue fund unless we start getting 300 people a day for the next four months?
I'm not going to comment on this until Misty tells me that we have a handle on it.
Okay, that's what some of us are worried about.
I can't pacify you tonight, sorry.
Will they ever cover time where we get?
Yes, they will. It's very, very high on Misty's.
One more question, did the council ask the previous owners why they closed it two years for six months at a time? Before they bought it?
I was not.
They knew why they did it.
Well, that's all.
So they didn't make money.
Okay, that's all I got, is, but don't get screwed up and off the tracks.
Yeah, thanks, Greg, I appreciate it. Um, I'm sorry, she was next, I don't know your name, so please let us.
Hi.
Know your name?
My name is Laura Clyde, I live at 2038 Baltimore, you can call me Suzie.
Okay, Suzie, thanks for being here.
I spent last night watching some past council meetings on YouTube, very good, by the way. Anyway, I realize you guys are not happy with the plunge and I do understand that the citizens of Hot Springs that voted for the plunge, I mean, they're the ones that wanted to get the plunge. As far as I can see, people have been trying very, very hard to get it updated, working and all the negativity is so sad because nobody's bringing up the good thing. Now, as far as the health club goes, that health club's been there for a long time. We bought memberships to that when my kids were in school, years and years ago. However, it's a family facility, it's someplace where you can go, the kids can swim, you can work out, you can go to the hot tubs, it's for a family. You know, so it's, and it's part of Hot Springs. And I would love to see it, but everybody's trying hard, they're trying really, really hard. And I would hate to see Evans Plunge. And it's not just a swing, it's much, much more.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think I saw one more hand, just a hand, I don't even see a face, there he is. Please come forward, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jessica Woolley. I'm on the agenda for tonight, but what I have come to present is a petition to get the memberships back to the.
Do you want to do that during the, the plunge benefits for employees part of the meeting?
Okay.
We'd like you to do it then, if that's okay?
Okay.
Appreciate being here.
Thank you.
We'll try to speed up to that point, but no guarantees. Any other communications from the public? All right, thank you. We're going to personnel and as we talked about earlier, items A and B we're going to vote on, we have a wage increase for Cynthia Messenger from 2026 to 2226.
By default.
It may be on the agenda from now on, voting will.
Motion to approve.
All in favor? Oh, discussion, sorry, please, discuss.
Well, my half of this, it's just like my close board's two of them, you can get a certificate, you come back and we give them a dollar an hour. You're setting precedence here.
No one does this, saying that there's a certificate.
That's how you present it. Okay, let me, let me rephrase that.
I don't see.
Water and sewer guys, we got a lot of certificates. We only make them do what are, water and sewer, call for like sewers of class three, water is what, class two? Two and one. Other guys have a lot more than what the plant requires, so we didn't give them a dollar for those extra certificates they have?
I'd like to just stay focused on this item.
Well, this kind of relates that because if we do this, you're setting, you're opening the city up for everybody's got certificates to get an extra dollar an hour.
There's certain people willing that.
I don't think so.
Yes.
This was in her budget request for 2015.
We talked about this at budget and I thought it was taken out.
You approved it. We approved it.
Right here, Brian Ford, today, just because you put in your budget.
That's why it's on the agenda and that's why we're voting on it, Carol, I'm unaware of that, thank you for being here.
Well, Misty, Misty just went to school and got certificates, so if she get a raise, if you guys want to give Cindy a raise, present it as a merit increase or something, but don't tie it to certificates.
If you'll look at this, there isn't a certificate tied to this. Please look at the agenda.
That's what she called it once she asked for it, last, last council meeting. She said she had a certificate.
It was an update that she gave to, and we saw it after the...
And if what we're saying, if you wanna give them a raise, give a raise, but don't tie it to certificate, cause you're gonna bankrupt this city. Every time someone gets a certificate with, uh, with anything, you're, 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 you're setting precedence.
I just want you to know how I, I say this, it doesn't say that here, first of all. And second of all, this is what was requested at budget time and approved, and my job is to implement the budget. You guys approved it.
There was no line item.
I don't remember that.
We don't approve anything in the budget that we don't come back and vote on. Still have to vote.
That's why we're voting on it.
But be honest, it's tied to a certificate.
I have not seen that because I don't believe it to be.
Review the last Kelspiel.
He said no longer tied to a certificate. You're just giving one, Cindy, a two thousand, two dollar raise.
I have the agenda as I want it for this, and it does not have it tied to a certificate.
So, it is not tied?
Correct.
But it is, if this is allocated.
It is, because that is how she put it in her budget.
Last three years.
That you guys approved. And I do not wanna set a precedence that if you get any benefit certificate, whatever you wanna think, that's fine.
You're, you're, you're giving a raise, two dollars, it has nothing to do with certificate, that's what I've been asked to vote on, is that correct?
Okay, cause their budget, that was approved by the council.
Correct. That is my... We can give people raises, we do it all the time.
That's what we're doing here, is voting on it.
All right, that's right. But you keep saying it's approved in the budget, it doesn't matter, we saw it.
It was approved during the budget process.
No, it wasn't, it was discussed.
It was discussed, not approved.
I'm sorry.
The amount requested with all of the line items, this being on them, was approved.
Do we have a motion on this?
That's why we're discussing.
Yeah, it's still America, so you can get a chance to discuss this.
I don't remember approving the raise over and above what we already gave everybody a raise.
It was requested in her budget.
It was presented.
We know we have to vote on it. And so, we're doing it.
So, it doesn't have to be two dollars, it could be a dollar and fifty cents, it could be whatever we wanted to.
We're good.
I have to ask you what you value. If you have a reason for whatever you give anybody, we did give somebody a dollar an hour increase here for the city employees. To our...
Right.
And, and it didn't have anything to do with the certificate at that time, because we were short. And it was, you know, and now we have...
But they are giving that thing, and we could go back.
So, we can actually have what we need to operate in that department. The education that these people who have is expensive, and it's required to use their...
Not the certificate.
I'm just discussing with you, Carol. The education that they have does help us in life, it does provide whatever, okay?
It's an excellent library. Okay, any other discussion? And this is just for Cindy, I'm separating the two for Cynthia. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Motion failed? Take out the names. Okay, um, this is opposed, I guess.
To oppose, it's Svenia, Schwarzenbach, Teshar, Roney, and Rice.
Can I make a motion that we give her a raise at a different amount?
Sure.
Uh, an hour, I'll see if it's something, anybody have any suggestions?
All right. Now, seconded.
What's my duty here?
Carol Anne proposed a motion that she get a dollar fifty an hour raise. It was seconded, so we can discuss that.
I guess if we're gonna do that, I suggest that instead of making it a dollar fifty, that we make it the same as what everybody, since everybody's talking about certificates, let's make it the same. Water, sewer, boys getting paid more.
We're not doing certificates, it's not related to that, so it's...
It depends on, well, Minnesota went to the...
We're trying to, but we're trying to.
For three years, at all these budget meetings, it was a certificate.
I guess Cindy does a great job of the library, no doubt about that. But she got the same raise as all the other employees already got. So, I don't know.
Well, I just, I can't see...
I think at the time when we did our budget, we were also looking into getting more help from the county. There are other ways, we can increase county, um, certificate, when they come and get their memberships. You know, I mean, we don't have to swallow this ourselves. But we do need to look at what we have there, and if we're gonna use the education that she brings to us and appreciate it, then this is actually what we do use of that.
Yeah, but we pay for her to go get that education.
No, none of it, we haven't.
Pay for them to go to school.
We pay for a lot of education that people go to. The idea is we are using the education that they bring it back to us. It is of value to us, is that right?
You go right back to the water and sewer guys.
Not only that, but my closest gonna go get educated, we can give them a dollar an hour?
Education is expensive.
I'm not saying it isn't. See, you're five hundred and twenty-five dollars.
All right, so I got, I got a second on a dollar fifty, I believe. So, I think we have to play this out. And then we can talk again if we want to vote something different. All right, so, a dollar fifty an hour raise for Cynthia Messenger. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So, I think that carries. Did I hear three or four, I'm sorry?
I got four.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ken, I didn't mean. So, that's another. Okay, I can't break that tie.
That's right.
Motion failed.
Okay. All right.
You know, you keep talking about getting a handle on the finances, maybe the city oughta get a handle on all the finances before we just start handing out raises again. Why are you looking funny like that?
Cause it was approved in the 2015 budget.
Just because it was approved doesn't mean, you know, we, we have to supplement our budget for our new administration. We don't even know if we have the money to even do that. So, I mean, be honest, do we, why don't we get a handle on our budget before we just keep spending more money?
You approved it too, Wes.
I just told you, if you approve it in the budget, doesn't mean you have to do it.
All right, um, I don't wanna drag this out much longer. Yeah, so, um, we have to do the same for Don Johnson?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion?
What is this raise? Merit raise, or what is this certificate?
I need that to be...
I have a problem with them just saying we're gonna give them a raise. I, I would really like to...
It's based on performance, Mary.
It's not what it is, Mary.
In my mind, it's, we have an incredible library out there. They run a tight ship.
It doesn't say that on here, that's, that's, I guess that's my question. I, I would appreciate if you put that on, if it's a merit raise or whatever it is. I'll thank John Schultz, I love him.
The president, as a merit raise. I'm, I do not have such a bit on here, it would not be documented as such.
But once again, she just received a fifty-two cent raise with all the rest of the city.
Because that's the cost of living, right?
But they all got it.
It's different, though.
No, it's not.
All in, I think I got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Raise your hands. All right, all right. Um, on C, Gordon, again, that was in the notes, that's a step increase. So, I guess going forward on the agenda, we need to be really clear what the raises are for. Do we need to vote on the step increase?
No.
No.
Okay. Um, and then you see coal, we dropped E and F, we're going to work on, um, jab descriptions. On G, we're spelling Jaeger correctly, without no R in the middle. And just, the rest is for your information, um, so, wordman's calm, or whatever. And Ryan, since you're here, thank you for being a police reserve, appreciate it.
Thank you, good.
I only hear good things about you. Appreciate that. Um... All right, let's move to resolutions. Again, this had a correction on lot eighteen for the overfalls. Added the S there. So, this is...
Motion to approve resolution twenty fifteen dash five.
Seconded.
Any discussion? This is kinda housekeeping, when we do annually, is his title's transferred. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, resolution twenty fifteen oh six. This allows for grant funding for our water facilities.
Motion to approve twenty fifteen dash six resolution.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, um, resolution twenty fifteen oh seven, uh, Nolan has provided some information about this. This has to do with holiday pay for staff.
Motion to approve twenty fifteen dash seven resolution.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I got a problem with that. You know, I don't mind if the holiday actually, the pay that they want actually falls on a holiday, but the day after holiday, I don't feel it should be considered a holiday. Yeah. Friday, Friday off after Thanksgiving.
I can understand time and a half or double time for a holiday.
The police don't have weekends, so this is primarily to focus on the police department.
I don't care. I just don't feel that if we give them Thursday off and they automatically get Friday off, you're considering that a holiday too. Basically, they could end up, they could want to pay for five days and wanna work two days.
Where did this double time and a half come from?
That has been in practice, we're actually reducing the pay for the holidays.
Yeah.
Uh, just so you understand us, um, they were getting double time and a half prior to our new personnel manual, and then...
Can I ask a question?
Can I finish?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Um, and then when we, you know, closely, we're looking at our personnel manual, and then based on discussions that the police department brought to our attention, they were getting paid double time and a half for holidays. And we're actually proposing to reduce that to just pay for the holiday and pay if they work on the holiday.
Double.
If they work on the holiday. I'm just making it clear to you.
But you just said that, that Friday isn't really considered a...
If they work on the holiday, if Christmas is on Sunday...
Okay, if, if Christmas is Thursday.
And we approve as a city, Christmas to be a holiday. And the, uh, someone from the police department or the water department or whomever works that day, they get paid double time instead of double function.
That's actually a holiday, but not the day after the holiday.
Look at it this way, then, yeah, look at it this way, then, yes, um, Friday after Christmas, if they don't work, who works? And the rest of them get paid for that as a holiday.
Regular time.
No, they don't work.
If we, if we...
I know, if they don't work.
They don't work.
They get paid their regular rate.
If we say it's a holiday, it's a holiday.
It's a holiday.
Holiday is a holiday. We designate a day as a holiday, it is a holiday.
So, that's when you rotate your people, if you work, Thanksgiving one year, you get Thanksgiving off the next?
If everybody gets paid a holiday on Friday, then they should also...
The people that get Friday off are gonna get paid their regular wages, they're not gonna get double time.
But they're not, they're working like the Christmas.
It's if you work on a holiday, if you work.
I understand that, the day after is not a holiday, it's just, we give them the day off, we don't, it's not a holiday.
If we council designated a day as a holiday, we have to recognize it as a holiday. Because you voted, we determined what holidays are.
I understand they still get paid, so you're trying to give them double time for a day that's not a holiday.
Which is half less than they used to get.
But, oh, you ain't gonna convince me, and I ain't gonna convince you, so...
Can I ask a question? I was gonna ask this to Don Gray. Mr. DeGray?
Yep.
Didn't we change that? The police department wasn't making two and a half times that salary on, on holidays, were they?
If I remember what we did, we paid everybody for like an eight-hour holiday, but everybody that was scheduled had to work and not scheduled didn't have to work. So, basically, everybody just got holiday pay.
So, it would've been double time, as I remember. Or not double time and a half.
Well, the way it was explained to me by the previous chief was that they got time and a half for working the holiday, and then they got holiday pay, which works out to be, out to be two and a half times. And then we're not, you know, we're proposing that we don't do that.
I don't think we used to do it that way.
Well, then they tried to pull one over on us. Either way, it's not happening. If this passes.
As a resolution, I believe it'll just say that they get paid the eight-hour holiday pay, everybody gets it whether they work or not, basically. But if you, if you work the holiday, you would get double paid because you get the eight hours you worked plus eight hours holiday pay.
And that's what we're proposing in this resolution.
It was to standardize it. It was to standardize it, Don.
So, we're just making it official, then, if that is what was happening before, we've heard different stories. Did you get a question answered?
Yeah, because I knew we did that. When they're saying they got double time and a half, I know we did.
Now, I'm not gonna argue that one. Yes. So, are we clear?
Yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right. We have a first reading of ordinance eleven three, which, um, makes us in compliance with state law. Wanna give that a look?
Now, seconded.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
That's okay, I'll ask it some other time. Actually, I have a bunch of questions on this, but...
We, we passed it, but you're welcome to ask a question or...
First reading.
I'm sorry, first of all.
Well, and any, any suggestions I would make would send it back to the first reading, so, I'm just wondering why?
Do you comply with state law?
You had a law that was more restrictive than state law, which I believe you're allowed to do. You have to at least meet state standards, but you can be more restrictive, and this is softening your ordinance. And, and what am I...
Depends on who you are, some do not believe we're softening it. So, that's subjective, I believe.
Okay. Do your, do the properties that you adopted in twenty fifteen oh five adhere to your new ordinance? And how does it affect previous?
Yes, it does.
So, all of those properties are platted and have building permits applied for on them? Because that's what you're adopting.
I don't know about the building permits.
That's what you're adopting here.
Cindy, uh, we are adopting exactly what the state law says.
Exactly, word for word.
And that has been to, we've been in front of the Department of Revenue, and they don't interpret it the way that you're interpreting it.
So, they, they don't interpret it that you have to be platted and have building?
They do not interpret it that way, no.
How do they interpret it then?
Or, if you go further, if you read it further, they interpret it as an or.
But what you're adopting says and.
But, but in the, in the, we read it at the beginning, yes, it does say and.
Yeah.
And then it says or, but this is exactly the state law language.
I know, I know, yeah, and I pulled it up and held it upside by side.
So, so you think it does track that, okay. And we went, we... And we went, we, the city, a couple of years ago, uh, we, this part of our ordinance and the state statute was under scrutiny.
Absolutely.
We prevailed, we prevailed under the state ordinance. And so we want ours, our ordinance to be in line with the state ordinance.
Sure. Okay.
Okay.
This, it just reads that you have to be platted.
It's very odd the way it reads. I would, I would agree with you, but... This is what we have.
It's actually brought to my attention by the municipal league as well, as our ordinance, so... I think we're ready to vote.
You already did.
From that one? Oh, that's right. And, and that was just the first reading. Alright. New business, and this is what I alluded to a little bit earlier. We're setting a public hearing for February twenty second at, uh, seven twenty-five P.M. For the application for C.S. Incorporated doing business as Mike's Place for package off-sale malt beverage located at sixteen forty-five University Avenue.
Motion to approve the hearing.
Second.
On, any discussion? Yes, sir.
I just have a question. Previous to this evening, it said off, on, and farm wine license. Is this different?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And that's why we didn't have a hearing today for the on-off. They had changed to, and the council, you have the reasons in your package. And I'd be happy to share that with whomever. Uh, but they did change it to request an off-sale license for malt beverage. And that's February second, seven twenty-five P.M., right here.
We have a motion in a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Um, new business B, travel request for myself, Misty, and Nolan for the, and I'll say it correctly, because it wasn't exactly right in the, in the... City Management Association Conference, and that is in peer selected session.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. C, okay. Motion to discuss plunge benefits for employees by Councilwoman Swartsamoff, Councilwoman Lommy, and we did have our justice, the other one, to speak. And I welcome you back up now, if that's okay, if you guys wanna wait until she speaks.
As I said earlier, my name is Jessica Wolsey. I currently have lifeguarded at Evans Plunge. I speak for the lifeguards and adopted front desk personnel. Due to the loss of the staff memberships at Evans Plunge, we would like to show how much we truly need them. I know that most of you don't exactly frequent the plunge and most of you are against it, but please hear me out. The loss of membership has caused a lack of morale and distrust in those who manage it. And I understand the, um, employees at Evans Plunge have always had a membership at the facility and that has benefited every single member, every single staff member there. All of the employees at the plunge may not consistently take advantage of the memberships, but it is nice to occasionally use the facility that we work at. I mean, we clean it, we take care of it, we watch everyone enter, exit. I'm part of the safety system that has been put in place. I have trained to protect that facility. The memberships enable us as employees to take advantage of the facility as we're available to do so. Another advantage to the staff memberships is that the lifeguards are able to maintain their skills in the water. A lifeguard on land isn't effective. We can watch, yes, but most of our duties are involved in the water. We need to be agile and able to move and we need to be able to swim. That is a skill that is easily lost if we are kept out of the water for a long period of time. The, the memberships for the staff at the plunge are one of the key perks at getting people to work there. I know multiple people who started working there and who have filled out applications to work there because they enjoy using the facilities and would like to be a part of the staff there. That membership is basically the only perk that we receive for working at the plunge. And we would appreciate it if that perk was returned. However, if they are not, I'm going to suggest that the other city employees, well, since the other, the other city employees receive vacation days, sick leave, things like that, that we receive the same thing, or we get an increase in pay. Most of us can't afford all the current salary to keep using the facility because that requires us to buy a membership. And most of the employees there are part-time. We don't get paid enough. After bills and stuff like that, we don't have enough left to take care of purchasing a membership. Would you guys like the petition that I have signed?
I'd like one, sure. Thank you, and I'll share that with any of you that would like to see it. Thank you, Jessica. Come on back. Suzie, right?
Yeah. I'm looking at this, and I, I don't know this for fact. I, I'm assuming you pay the lifeguards minimum wage?
It depends on their position.
And, and so if they're not a full-time employee, they get no benefits.
That's correct.
So, you're, you're paying them minimum wage, they're not working forty hours a week. You have them in there and they are supposed to save lives if anything happens in there.
Cool.
So, so I, I would think for them to keep up their skills and, and I agree. You would want them to go in, but they, when they're working, they're not supposed to swim. So, at what point, we're gonna pay you minimum wage, we're not gonna give you benefits, but you pay us to come back down here to keep your skills up for doing the job that you do. Doesn't make a lot of sense to me. That's just me.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes. I'm gonna go to Carol Anne and Craig if there's no one else. Okay. Either of you may discuss.
My question is how, um...
You talk so gently, can you...
This has never voted on to give these benefits to either the police department or the plunge. And we brought it to the council once to just give everybody benefits and it was voted down. But Craig and I think our problem was singling out departments in the city and giving them free plunge benefits.
Has it all been suspended? That's why we have people here unaware of that?
No, my question was, how are you paying for this?
They've been suspended?
Okay, but they've had it for six months. So how, how has it been paid for?
We are working on figuring out how to put this in their job description.
But I was told, I asked this a month ago, how it's being paid for because you've given employees a benefit that this council did not approve.
I did, the plunge stuff was there long before me, so let's not...
The police department?
Yes. I request that they be physically fit. I think that's inappropriate. I have suspended their membership, so let's drop that, okay?
No, I just wanna know how it's paid for. You gave them a benefit and if you take it in back now because I question it, that's not really, you know, making sense.
I'm taking it back now and I'll speak very loudly so you can hear because I've been given legal counsel that it is a taxable benefit. So I do need to figure out how to do that. And that's why, not because you requested it.
Okay. Is that right, Carol?
Yes. Yeah, and that was what I had said before, remember? I said we were trying to make it for everyone because it was a taxable benefit and I brought that to the table.
And I addressed that. And they've got, been suspended and that's why they're here.
So, there is another way of looking at this and I would like to address that if I could. And I was looking at doing something with the wellness committee.
There's a whole...
And we can do that without having it be taxed or enforced.
There's, there are a lot of...
Yes, there's a lot of different ways.
Including municipal league, there's about a chapter on how to...
I did, I took the whole thing out.
Why can't we, we've got a resolution at the golf course that gives, uh, a full-time city employee, uh, almost half off of the golf.
And that was what I addressed last month.
Right, so why, and, but in this also, a city employee, but yet when you do couples, so you're also benefiting someone who's not a, a city employee.
And that was addressed when, last month or last meeting, and I stated that that was in there. So what I'm trying to say is, there is a way of fixing all of it. And we can do that.
How was it addressed?
I just told you what it was.
But you addressed, how did you address it?
I, I am trying to say, I would like to address it tonight by proposing that we do a wellness program for the employees of City of Hot Springs. And we can do that in their job description and we can make it so it is a tax benefit, untax benefit. It is a reward and it is also, um, something that we, if we require it, it will work. And I think right now for us to do whatever, you know, we've made some changes and confused everything, but if we can wait and maybe make this program work, I think all will come resolved.
What, can we just do a resolution for all city full-time employees and work out something for the plunge employees?
I think the wellness program could include...
To give them a half off or something?
I think the wellness program could even include the Mueller Center. There are wellness...
Only their employees at the city, they'd be included anyway.
She's talking about using the Mueller Center.
There are other ways of using our facilities.
They can use it now, open gym. Here's the way I see this whole thing. You're trying to, to put Craig and Carol Anne in a bad spot by saying that they wanted the benefits taken away. That's not what they were trying to achieve. You were giving them a taxable benefit and only part of the employees, yes, you did, and only part of the employees were getting these benefits.
No, I'm not trying to put them in a bad light.
Well, that's what you did by making this gal here get a petition to bring this back, to, to bring them back, to, to allow them to have their benefits.
As I stated, and listen this time, it is based on tax, the IRS.
That's exactly right. And that's why I said, you're, you're putting this out there to these employees that, these two are the bad guys.
Based on tax law.
You know, Cindy, put them talk. You're, you're putting out, like, try to make it, the employees against just certain county...
We're trying to correct all of it, Wes.
Can I talk?
Yeah, but I'm just saying, we're trying to correct it by doing a wellness program.
Yeah, now you're trying to correct it because they keep bringing it to the...
I actually brought it up as being something that was unfair. So if you wanna make it look bad, you know...
I, I would like to look at a resolution and then if you can do your well... I think you're gonna run into a lot of difficulties when you, if you study it.
I have, I studied it.
Okay, now I have to, I've looked at it, it looked very complicated. Medical exams, all kinds of things.
I've been in quite a few of them and they do work.
Okay.
Do work.
Alright, anyway, I would like to suggest that we look at a resolution.
I would appreciate that.
And to set up something so that the employees can get, uh...
And that's why I would prefer...
A discount similar to what the golf course did.
Are you referring to all or just separate?
All.
I think we need to include part-time and their employees at the plunge.
Right, and that's the issue.
To me, it's ridiculous for not letting lifeguards swim.
I agree.
I agree. That's what I was trying to say. We were never, we were never trying to keep the lifeguards from swimming, but that's what they made it.
No, Wes, I re, I resent that. That is not true. That is not true.
Then why did you, why did you stop it for everybody?
Three letters again, the IRS. OR, TAX, whichever one you want.
Can I say something since I started this whole mess by saying that?
Sure.
I have nothing against lifeguards, I, I believe you should swim, I was a lifeguard for a year. The reason I brought this up is because our mayor gave certain benefits to police department. And I thought that if certain people have benefits, the whole city employee should have the same benefit. It wasn't nothing personally against Evans Plunge or against anybody else, police department or the mayor. I just thought it wasn't fair to do it for one group and not everybody. Same way for golf courses. If they get golf free, you guys should be able to golf free. That's what I got with getting that when I did all this.
Then they should have paid holidays and paid time off.
If they're full-time employees, they should. If they work eighty hours a pay period, full-time employees, they should get benefits.
But they're, they're kept from working eighty hours so that they don't have to pay the benefits. There are people there who would like to work eighty hours. It's not an option.
There's only three time, three full-time positions budgeted for the plunge. And just to clarify, the police was so that they could work out. Had nothing to do with the pool, was to say physically.
Their, their families didn't have to work out. And you give it to the families to...
And also, we were told it was because we had a hard time keeping policemen.
That's correct.
That was what we were told.
That is correct.
Are you guys interested in a wellness program then?
Why don't we?
We can do a resolution to that.
I would love for this to be resolved.
So as of now, no plunge employees can swim for free, the way it is right now.
That's correct. Because I'm told all or nothing.
Put, but you could put it in their job description that they have to swim to keep up their lifeguard training.
And that's exactly what we're going to do.
We brought a motion to the council for everybody to be able to swim and you and several, four councilmen voted it down. We tried to give it to everybody.
I could not because Lommy was involved right that time.
You said that you would have voted no.
That is not correct.
Well, you know, I have a problem putting in their job description to do it. I'll tell you right now, I won't agree for the golf course to do it in their job description because they don't have to golf.
Let's stay focused on the plunge right now, okay? Suzie?
I don't know how the families got involved. All I was saying was, if, if they're employed at the plunge, their job requires them to know how to swim and to swim. You don't have to give their families a membership, but you should give the employees...
What we're gonna do, and Craig alluded to this, is put it in their job descriptions and then we don't have to deal with the three-letter words as much if it's actually in their job description, like for the police or lifeguards to remain physically fit to do their job.
Okay.
So we are trying to do this legally.
Okay, I just, I didn't know where all the families came in.
The mayor, the mayor's the one that brought that into the picture, not us.
Um, that's how it was when I came here, so...
The police department's family were never in the deal until you voted in there.
Yes.
The other ones.
Well, are we looking to have a discount for some people and in their job description for other people?
I think that sounds like that's the only way to do it.
I mean, the golf course, they're getting half-priced memberships. You know, they are, they're not getting free memberships, just half-priced.
Certain ones that work out there get free, like our guy from...
Because it's in his job description.
Yeah, but we need to change that because he can be a full-time, instead of contract employees. We can change his job description.
We can change anybody's job description.
This week, uh, in the Bahamas or wherever you go, they can't change.
Could we make a motion for the plunge lifeguards to be able to use the swimming pool until we resolve this?
Second.
Yeah, I've got a motion.
I'm sorry, can I hear you again?
There is a motion to discuss if we can vote on this.
Right, if you guys wanna propose something, I would love you to do that.
I'm only gonna sit down on the table there.
I didn't make a motion.
It was a motion, it was a motion to, I don't know exactly how to word it, to let the lifeguards, uh, continue using the plunge and we'll resolve it.
Well, we'll, we'll change the job description.
Right.
Could I, could I all... Make it retroactive?
Yes.
I would, I would suggest that if we're gonna, if, if we do it that way, then we do not specify just lifeguards because everybody that works around that pool is not a lifeguard.
Right.
So I would, I would suggest to put it that plunge, plunge employees...
Then we would need to change it.
We are...
And then we'll work on a wellness program or...
We'll work on that, our resolution.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to...
For all, all plunge employees to be able to use...
Yes, sir. I can... I can see a hand.
Well, we've got a motion and a second, so we are getting this.
But before you, before you proceed with the motions and so forth, I've just got a question about drawing an order here. You have on the agenda a motion to discuss this. Do you not need to have on the agenda a motion to take action to remedy this?
Not according to Misty. She's told us two meetings ago that we can't vote on something if it's on the agenda to discuss.
Okay, so, you can move beyond the discussion stage to go ahead and vote to take action?
If I get a call, yes, I can.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. I'll take one more because we're, we're ready to vote. Chris, if you're brief, very brief.
Why does everybody want something for free? If the golf course, those people, they, if they're working out there, they shouldn't get free memberships. They should be able to pay for it. Evans Plunge employees, they should not get free membership. They should be able to pay for it, just like everybody else. I put my pants on, just like everybody else.
Okay, Craig, you had something?
Well, you said wellness plan. Now, we're making a motion for...
Take to the motion?
This is part of the motion.
No, it's not.
No, it's not.
Well, I'm asking a question about, okay? Were you letting everybody here at the, at the plunge get free memberships and we're going to tweak their, their job descriptions? Are we going to do that for every employee of the city, like the street shop that needs to get in shape or large apartment or...
The motion that we are preparing to vote for?
I want to know that before I vote.
I think we're going to work on a resolution for all the employees, not just selected ones.
I think, I think you need to stick just the lifeguards at this point. Get them back in the water.
No, I think all the employees.
Uh, I, I think just the lifeguards.
Motion's for all employees and has a second.
The motion was for all, so I need, and I have a second, so I have to go forward with the motion as it was designed.
Last one, the one we sent, you're making a new one.
All, all employees being able to use the Evans Plunge facility.
All Evans Plunge employees continue using the plunge.
Well, we work on a resolution.
All facilities.
All facilities now.
Correct.
Yeah, well, we work on a resolution.
Okay.
All employees, all facilities.
Are we, are we clear on what we're voting on?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
I asked, you voted for all Evans and plunge employees or all employees period?
All Evans and plunge.
Okay, it, it got a little...
Debbie has a gentle voice back there.
I have it, all Evans Plunge employees continue using all Evans Plunge facilities.
Sure, but somebody else said something else after you said that, so...
Okay. Great, um, all right. The motion to change, on change order from Northern Plains LLC for 164,279.60 cents and you have information from the engineer on how this came about.
Motion to approve the change order?
Any discussion?
The only thing I might want to mention is, we need to change the way we do change it.
I agree. To me, that was a lot of...
They need to somehow come before us quicker than one big bolt deal at the end. Because we really don't know what they submitted for the change order, other than what Tracy just wrote this update, but I would kind of like to see that.
You mean like in the process of them working or...
As the job is progressing or they get something, they should, Tracy should draw a change order up right then and sign it and then let the council...
Well, I think they should go to Tracy with the change order. I don't think Tracy should do it. If they got something that they want to change, they should do it, after Cindy.
Tracy usually goes to them and asks them to change things. That's all change orders do.
That's what it does happen to.
There was a lot added to this.
But it still should be funneled through the proper, to the council, instead of just...
I mean, it's not long to take this as an item to talk to Tracy about. I, I appreciate, yes.
I brought this up to Dwight earlier in the afternoon.
Is this reference to Northern Plains?
Yes.
Okay.
This is almost a 21% increase over the original contract. That's a huge amount to be, as Dwight said, all one of the laws. And I think about half of this could have been foreseen, even if you look at Tracy's films of the explanation.
Like the rock and things like that.
I think about half of it should have been foreseen because it was on the surface and some site work prior to letting a contractor put it out for bids would have shown that there was other, other work that was going to have to be done. And I think, I agree with Dwight, and I brought this up before, these change orders are just an annoyance for the taxpayer. And I guess another thing I'd like to see that kind of relates to this because I don't think anybody in the public even knows that there's a 21% increase until you get, you're just not voting on this. And the rest of them will find out when the newspaper comes out. I think all of the notes that can legally be published should be put on your website right along with the agenda, so that I don't have to come down every meeting, pay $3 for a packet.
All the notes, what, you mean the whole packet?
Yes. I think it should be on website so that I can...
Some of the things we get are not, I mean, we'd have to retype or something. We don't get everything as a file.
Everything that can be, should be on website. If public information, we should have to make several trips trying to get hold of it.
We're, we're reading better about that.
Technology.
Would it be convenient for you to put an additional packet at the library for public viewing, in addition to some online materials?
Correct.
I, I think what Lindsay is saying, Nolan, is the stuff that comes in the public packet that's required to be here, if that was available on the website, like the school district now, they don't publish necessarily a, a packet for the public at their meetings, but everything that is part of the public packet is available off their website, off their agenda.
Right.
Anything that you want, that's, that's public, is available.
And as supplement to that, like, let's say we have tall grass, large grass, let's have to upload that to the website. We'll make all those documents, it's still going to be the website like we suggested. We'd also do an additional free and charge packet at the library to come with you at your, so we'd be two prominent options.
Sure.
It might make meetings longer.
Call motion.
I've got one more comment. What Tracy drew up here, I don't know why, but Lindsay brought this up to me too and he wanted me to mention it, but on the first change order on the front page, the amount is different than what was on the last page from the original change order.
Is there 2,000 dollars?
No, more than that, about 6,000 dollars.
I'm aware of a 2,000.
164, 279, and 175,40.
Because Tracy had to make some changes and the actual change order's correct, that that part's wrong. The actual change order's correct.
Well, I figured that.
That's why I was trying to explain to them before...
Better to catch it now, but later.
The actual change order's right, that that part is wrong. And Tracy also wanted to make sure that you guys, you do want to charge them the $2,000 late fee, which would make it 162,279.62 change order.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Apparently, you want that.
You wanted to make sure.
Well, yeah.
So, that would be 162, 279.62 with the late fee. So, that would change if you want to charge them.
Yeah.
I personally believe that in furtherance of doing contracts, we should increase the late completion amount.
This is the first time we've ever charged.
It may be the first time, it may be the last, but I think it should be a lot more than $2,000.
Well, it goes by the day, it doesn't, if you don't just set a dollar amount, you do it by the day.
By the day. Not 250 a day, 550 or 700 a day.
Well, you have state guidelines to work with.
Well, there are penalties that we can be more restrictive than what the state does.
I could all...
I have stated that I think it should be more restrictive.
So, do we want the motion to be with the late fee, so that would be 162?
162, 279.62.
Is that what y'all want to vote on? Or, okay.
Do we have a motion?
I have a motion and a second.
Thank you.
We have to change the motion and we change the price.
And the 162, 279.
162, that's the motion, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All business.
All right, um...
Do you want to show them that?
I've been speaking to Mr. Hanson about the easement and he has some questions for the council, I believe, and I don't know what those questions are. I've emailed him back and forth and Cindy is welcome to come, or I'd be glad to take the questions. I don't know what those are.
I thought this was all agreed upon upon sale. That's what the realtors still here in Foles.
We didn't have the easement description, the easements were not drafted by Andersons at that time.
And he said here, told us, once we had all that, it was a done deal.
Cindy Hall says that this guy stuck a big rock right in the middle of the road and whole bunch of logs and stuff like that.
I, Craig, I haven't been up there since...
I didn't, that's what Cindy Hall thought.
I was just up there one day yesterday and took pictures and I did not see anything in the road. I, I will agree... I will agree that the gate is locked. I took pictures as far as I could from this side of the lock gate.
And you can't see very far from this side of the gate, it goes a long ways up there there.
And I agree, the gate is locked.
So, you think the rock is on our property or on his property or...
Well, his, his property goes up there to the pass at First Forest, so I don't know. I, I'm just going to go on Cindy Hall's, I have a...
Easy to have questions from us, is that what he said?
Yeah, I don't know, and I don't know what they are.
He does want to approach the council, right? I...
Why don't we do a certified letter?
So, they don't have one, or he's going across our property?
No.
So, he's not crossing our property?
Well, I would, I don't know that.
Well, you need to tell them not to until they come to the council and they'll get it here soon.
Okay.
Is that, or we put our old chain lock on that gate, which we got anyway down there?
Well, there's three of them on there.
We, we, the, the deal was to leave it all to the... We voted on that. So, the public could use that for hiking and biking.
Locking, they're locking, you don't give them a key, you can't get in.
That's the trick.
Part of the problem is, is it's on his land.
And everybody's concerned about our water system, but you know, it ain't going to affect nothing because it's spring water, it's locked, it's an oil locker.
If you said he won't respond, can you just send him certified by, that's the legal process.
We're communicating, but I mean, I email him, he emails me a week later, I mean, it's a change. I can send him a certified letter, not a problem.
Does my Hanson live here?
I think he lives somewhere close to Genegas, but I don't know.
Well, I guess we want a resolution. We voted on this a long time ago, we, we keep pushing for it, pushing for it, nothing happens, so I guess I'm, I'm kind of screwed. Yeah, because Brady says that we have total control of that gate.
Okay.
That's what he said here and told us when we made the deal.
No, we don't. I cannot, I, I, I did see what was done, we locked it, but it is locked. You're welcome, look at my phone too, but it is, it is a locked gate.
I was out there, I don't watch. I checked about once a week. I don't watch or talk. There is a hole, you could see from the old, right, gate, I don't know if it's in the middle of the road.
I have a picture of that as well, the road, and I did not see it over. It is protected, it's controlled. It was over at the bottom. This is in his front yard. Okay, any other discussion on that? So, you'll send a certified letter?
Sure.
Anything else?
If you can suggest to my, 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 There's a post that's up there from here to the exit sign from the gate. And then beyond that to where the old bridge is, where you make the corner onto our property belongs to Mister Hanson.
I thought we shared that. I thought when we bought that, when the city bought that from Genegus, we shared that.
We bought a different piece of the railroad.
Well, how it's explained to us.
It's gonna be shared. We've been on half and then this one Harley's bringing to us. Yeah, cuz.
But that didn't belong to Mister Genegus, that piece of the railroad. That piece, David Keel has the lock gate.
And then he owns up to our fence, our gate.
Then there's a post that's Mister Keel's. And then from the post to up to the river Old Tressle, where we turn onto our property belongs to Mister Hanson. I can show you.
That's city property. It goes up over the hill or?
Well, right by where it makes the turn. I can, I can show you the flats. I can show you the titles. That's why we're getting.
He said why he hasn't signed it.
I don't, I have no idea, Craig. He's got to get his approved by the Rocky Mountain Health Fund.
I know that.
Which is, which is one of the issues. And then there's something else he has a question about, and I don't know what.
Should we invite him to talk with us or?
Well, let's see what comes back to the letter.
You guys okay with that?
Why would you put that letter without a drive on our? Hope you have.
Anything else for Carol?
I should say these guys' property.
I think that would.
Or the city.
More accurate, yes. City property. Okay, um, I'm gonna go into committee reports if there's no further discussion on that. And Mister Ashley, your co-
Administrative and Promotion met at 2:00 P.M., January fourteenth, City Hall. We discussed possible amendment to two thousand and fifteen Personnel Manual, allowing for double rate pay. And we settled that tonight already. We discussed compensation incentives for employees earning certificates, especially among librarians. From Mr. Roney. We discussed discounted or free use of city entities, including Evans Plunge and Southern Hills Golf Course. Good for Health. Brought up by Georgia and Caroline Schwartz. Discussed potential sale of guard building adjacent to Buckler Park Soccer Field. Discussed, discussion on new job description format to be standardized for all city employee positions. And we had a discussion on policy to include with each agenda outlining order for public participation. And that was it.
Okay, and for code ordinances, we did get the five letters out.
Uh, one, two, three, four.
And another one coming. You might wanna come check your envelope at City Hall.
Alright. But we did get the, uh, letters out to Jimmy Lojanis, Mike O'Hanson, Earl Doughty, Ed and Charlotte Reynolds, and Mary Bowers. And I think Mary said that they have to get back to us by March twelfth.
Yeah, number sixty there.
Yeah. Yes.
Alright, anything else?
That's it.
You're good. Okay, um, the Delta Committee looking and, um, the Plunge.
Yes, we had a meeting January sixteenth. And we were, um, compiling information on fire egress load safety on the second floor. And heard Tracy Bastian and Scott Seminar, which are city engineer.
City engineer.
City engineer inspector. Thank you. Had signed off on those issues, stating that we are in compliance. Um, and also, it was hinted out that when voted at the city election, the voters referendum on the plunge included a pool, a workout room, sessions, and to get shot. And that's what the voters had voted on. We did discuss viable alternatives. Well, we tried to find viable alternative suggestions, but none would really work. Things, other things have been tried and have failed elsewhere. And this is what our membership wants.
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Our building inspector and engineer signed off on that.
Let me ask something to that for you that'll help you.
Well, I know, I talked to Tracy and he said that he looked at the structure, but he says not to add any more weight to the second floor.
He could, we asked for load limits and he can't do that.
He's not a structural engineer.
He said, and he said that all he could say is if we don't, just what you're saying, Craig, if we don't add anything more.
Okay, the fire exit, is that door unlocked all the time?
They're gonna redo that completely.
They, they should be doing it before they let anybody else in there. That should be a fire exit right away.
It has to do with occupancy levels. Twenty-nine is okay with the one egress. We both love that. We need the other door.
I'd like to see that, I guess.
I did see that. And the fire, I done that, but I talked to the fire marshal in here. And he said that they didn't inspect buildings, but his thought was that anything with as big an upstairs as that has, that it means two, two fire escapes.
I'd like to see the law that says twenty-nine people.
I did, we saw it.
Can only have one exit.
And he also had the insurance inspection that Harley requested. He just, it had never been done. So they're working on that.
Oh, awesome. We're not going to have any more meetings.
Oh, okay.
Did you say, so she repeat herself, please?
And just the last.
Which part? About the meetings? We will not be holding any additional meetings regarding the plunge.
The mayor may want to you to continue in some way on that committee, but it's four of the members of that committee felt like that we had done all that we could on that committee for that problem. Okay, but at the end, immediately scheduled another meeting?
We did.
So I don't understand.
We're canceling that.
Did anyone else want to comment on that committee? So we will disband that Delta Committee for now? Unless we have another issue or wanna address it differently? Val, you, Val?
No.
I think you asked to speak earlier and I forgot to get back to you. Was there something, and I apologize.
No.
You raised your hand because somebody beat you and then I think I didn't get back to you.
I'm good.
Okay. Alright.
Just, it kinda goes a little bit hand in hand with what you were just discussing. Uh, how many, how many current members, uh, do you have signed up for the plunge?
We're actually working on getting that number right now. I don't have it. It's hundreds. As you know, Don, but I mean.
A hundred something?
Hundred, no, several hundred.
What kind of membership are you asking?
There's several.
Membership, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
I've asked for those numbers, all the different clarifications, the city, out of town, discount, thirty percent, everything. I've asked for a breakdown of all that.
And, and we are working on that. We're also transitioning to a point of service, uh, system at the plunge during the closure period, which will make getting that information a couple clicks. So, um, ask, ask that again in a month if you don't mind.
It boggles my mind. You can't answer that. You should have like a, a receipt book. That should have the detail.
This is Theodore's day off, so I didn't, I didn't hear that. He is working on that. And as Carolyn said, it is in progress.
And that audit's still in progress and that might be in that, right? Catching up on the audit stuff.
Well, like Wes pointed out, we can, we can count memberships and there's different types of them, but, um, the audit's a different thing. We do need to do the reconciliation for that.
I think.
Thank you. And I think the committee, I appreciate you guys meeting. I know it wasn't an easy topic. Employee Safety, Scott did meetings. And he does have a building and zoning meeting on Thursday evening at City Hall. Employee Safety meeting was on how to properly use a ladder. Anybody else know? Um, who's on?
Everything at Evans Plunge is on all pretty well.
Yeah.
The library, city's working on black notebooks, getting them protected and enhanced and putting them on CDs so that they're more available by computer. Miller Center, Chris is looking into buying chairs and he's priced the dishwasher and there's questions as far as the amount that we offer, authorized him to use. So we're looking into that. That's nothing at the airport, but I'll probably hold these next week.
Yeah, you will. I'll tell you about that later. Okay, um, Councilman Graham's parks?
Yes, we met and we discussed, I guess, start to switch some of these bathrooms over to air dryers instead of the paper towels. Uh, we discussed the need to, I guess, start planning for this spring for that playground at Brookside Park and get things worked out with part. I've talked to Nolan a little bit and I guess. And at this meeting, I guess, the mayor has decided to implement a Parks Foundation Committee.
Can we call it community? Can it be both? I mean.
Parks, or I guess, I guess you tell me, Parks and Community Foundation or?
We'd like to call it a community foundation.
Community foundation? Well, then I guess.
It would include parks, but then it's not just specific to parks.
So I guess anyone that's interested on being on this foundation, they can, they can get ahold of anyone that's currently on the foundation, which is Carrie Hagan, um.
Deanne.
Deanne McComb, um, Carrie's friend Clay.
Frye's.
Clay Frye. And I guess who else was?
Jared Coligan.
Gerald Coligan. And I think that's it. So I guess anyone wants to be on this foundation or you can contact me and I'll.
And we'll be real clear. The foundation would be for advisory purposes only, would not be empowered to, or autonomous at all, and anyone I think can advise. Right.
That's, uh, that's all we talked about.
Alright, yeah, thanks for having a good meeting today. Appreciate it. Um, I do have a public safety report from the police department. I'll just read it. It's a little bit long, but, um, in two thousand and fifteen, the police department will undergo significant changes. This will include a new look for our department, including badges, decals, and decals for our patrol vehicles. This will ensure they are not only more recognizable to the public, but also distinct from their Fall River County Sheriff vehicles. The officers will become more visible in the schools as we work to develop a better relationship with the youth of the community. Along with the mayor, school superintendent, we're, and school superintendent, we are planning to attend the Fall River Commission's meeting on February seventeenth, eleven A.M. to request their support for school, a school resource officer. And if any of you are interested, we welcome you to come on the seventeenth, eleven. It's actually Canyon Cottage.
Canyon Cottage.
Canyon Cottage at the State Home. There, something going on in the courthouse that day. So, if school resource officer is something you think we need in this community, please join us that day, talking to the commissioners. Additionally, we will be making ourselves more accessible to the general public, beginning of quarterly public safety forums. We are in the process of planning one for early March. The date will be well advertised as soon as we have that official, which should be tomorrow. Uh, the forums will be designed to allow the public to voice their concerns about general safety issues while also enabling our department to provide information to the public. More details, okay, I just gave the details. The police department now has a Facebook account that you can like for up to the minute status on police department information. And it also is being used for lost and found items that are turned into the police department from the community. So I recommend you like that. Um, they just give a general statement here that we will strive to provide the citizens with a level of dedication that has not been seen before. And, um, the Hot Springs Police Department will continue to honorably serve the great citizens of this community. They report on the second Monday of each month. And if you're wondering why they're not here, it's because, um, we would either have to pay somebody overtime to sit here for a couple hours or, um, you know, the person who's on duty, if they got a call, then they would not be available. So this is how we're trying to handle this for a while, but we will let you know about the public safety forums, um, probably in March. Yes, Wes?
I got one more thing to add. I forgot. Eboon come to that Parks Rec meeting and she kind of made us aware of what was going on with the two different entities at Evans Plunge. She kind of gave us a heads up on Neil's situation down there. She just, she wanted, she wanted to make sure that we were all fully aware that, I guess, they're two separate entities.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. Appreciate that. Last, but certainly not least, it's alphabetical order, Dwight. It's not personal. Well, no, it's per the committee name. Just, okay.
Alright, what did we do here? Uh, we went over the state water plan and that was the resolution we passed tonight. The State Home is looking at running sewer lines up Twenty-fourth Street. Is that the one you live on?
Yeah.
Since we're on that state plan, the state will pay for that.
Oh, really?
You didn't know that?
No.
That's what that was.
He won this day.
Your road is getting done up.
We'll, we'll take your money.
It's been dug out for two years, so it's probably gonna change.
Uh, we discussed two thousand and fifteen street projects again and Hickory Valley View, Main Street by Evans and the Telephone Company, and National Street was all issues in it. We discussed the fence being put up at the Hot Brook Pump Station and around the one million gallon tank. And Tracy will get the amount of fencing we have laying out there ready to be put up and give back to the committee on how much will be needed to fence Hot Brook and the two million gallon tank. And we need to do that because of, uh, the fence. Homeland security deal. We discussed, we got a rancher that sounds like he'd be willing to negotiate a sludge option with us to allocate sludge. So we're looking into that. We're also looking into that screw press deal again to get rid of our sludge. We talked about the asphalt zipper again. And the consensus of the committee was to have Billy be at the next public works meeting to go over what projects he has planned for that before we commit to buying it this year. The armory sale was discussed and it was also discussed if the city should apply for a use permit on review to store material in the armory. Because that's what any private person would have to do. And I think Scott's working on that. Sinkhole on Twenty-seventh Street by the Federal Forest Building, fix ASAP is what I have in my notes. There's a pretty good sinkhole in the street started there that needs to be fixed. I don't know if it got relayed down the pipe or not.
It's still there.
The trickle filter is being built in Minnesota, as you speak. Uh, we had Margaret and Tom Thadson, or just, it's just Margaret, but they got a sewer issue at one oh five South Fourth Street. And they showed up at the meeting and, uh, I'm working with Tracy a little bit, see if we can help the people out and get a sewer going. That's it.
Thank you all.
Can I ask, did anybody talk about that, did anybody talk about that sewer running on that street up at State Home? Did everybody get that fixed? Have we talked about it?
I drove by that yesterday. They are, um, they need to fix the drain field, which they will do and actually might do if we keep having long days. But I didn't tell them that they are routinely pumping it out to make sure that it doesn't overflow again.
As it is right now.
And, um, Christie, I'm sorry, Misty, my gosh, is not here tonight. And she didn't get renamed. Her name is Misty. She's out sick today. But she is definitely working on reconciling the books for the plunge and the city in general. So, you know, you definitely have a right to be concerned and we're definitely working on that. Sure.
Should we have on here Mayor, City Administrator's report also?
Um, he's.
I mean, Harley always made a report.
As the, as the finance officer.
And administrator.
And administrator.
Well, basically what the mayor report is, is what Nolan gave me. So, you know, we kind of work together on that.
What the city administrator should do.
Nolan, if you wanna just report, because pretty much this is stuff you're working on. I mean, it's not, I'm just asking, just asking why he wasn't on the agenda.
I guess it's a good idea, too, to have him report.
Okay.
These people might wanna know.
Well, I, I don't.
Get practice.
He's working far beyond forty hours a week, alright. We, one of the things that Nolan did is got together a community calendar and, um, and we made the front page to start with it, so we're pretty excited about that. It's a new online calendar that combines information. It's basically the schools, the chamber, the city, who am I forgetting, the library. Um, all, it's one stop shopping for our community calendar. It's awesome and.
Public organizations and private businesses as well. So everybody calendar the same calendar for planning and.
calendar for planning, and, yeah, read, read the article, it's all-
Yeah, thank you, Karen. Um, we're also doing a logo contest for Evans Plunge, that's also in the Star that you can read about, and, um, right now Scott and Justin are at a, is it right now, a tourism conference, um, to talk to Black Hill State and their tourism department about having Hot Springs be their, their project for their fall semester, like they did for Hill City, which was incredible, um, I highly recommend you guys take a look at that. I'm not even gonna try to say the guy's name, embarrass myself. Um, Chioto. Um, so those are the things that, that we're working on besides all of the city business that you've heard about already tonight, and, um, and we'll, we'll give Nolan a chance to speak going forward, I think that's a very good idea, he's doing a lot of good work, and, um, that's all I had, and, um-
Motion to go into executive session.
I need to ask a question first. Can you put up a dent the next time to talk about twenty-five percent off membership of Gulf Forest or City?
February, you guys will be setting a late schedule for Gulf Forest to review it for survival.
There'll be a, a whole rate schedule for the Gulf Forest.
Put twenty-five percent off the taxpayers of Hot Springs for membership of Gulf Forest, just like the plunge.
Yep, yep, all right.
Second that motion, we're going to executive session.
Get all in favor.
Aye.
Uh, we closed, three, five minutes.